Good evening, everybody. We do have a, hopefully, a pretty quick agenda tonight, so we appreciate you all joining us for our July meeting on it. Before we get started, I'm going to have Mr. Tyler, I'll lead us in the Pledge of Allegiance, and Mr. Tyler's going to lead us in the invocation. If you can stand with me. My pledge of allegiance?
To the flag of the United States of America. And to the republic from which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Just pray. Father, we just thank you for the blessings you've given us as we keep in your blessing our day, and as we give us the guidance to make this a great community, and as we go this, as we all, without our bid.
Amen. So, thank you all for joining us this evening. I'll call this July 5th, 2017 Planning Commission Meeting to Order. If we can do roll call.
Compton, Covert, Haney, Mueller.
Here.
Parker.
Here.
Parsley.
Here.
Panado.
Here.
Powell.
Here.
Tyler.
Here.
All right. Any questions on the minutes from previous month? Make a motion to approve. Motion to approve. Do we have a second?
Second.
Take it by Ms. Mueller. Motion by Mr. Powell. All in favor say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Okay. First item on the agenda, public hearing, proposed changes to the Master Street Plan, presented by Patsy Christie.
As you will remember by council resolution, we review the Master Street Plan in odd-numbered years and the land use plan in even-numbered years. So, we spent the last several months kind of talking about traffic issues, development patterns, potential development patterns in the city, and have identified three changes that we're bringing forth as an amendment to the Master Street Plan. The first one is an extension of 56th Street all the way up to the new 412 bypass, with the idea of sometime in the future, a interchange at that location as that area development. We want to make sure we have it on the Master Street Plan so that that could happen. The extension of 56th Street would create another north-south arterial on the west side of 49. As you'll remember, we're doing the extension from Don Tossen Parkway down to Johnson Mill Boulevard. That is under design, has been completed. We're going after funding for utility relocation and acquisition. The portion from where it ends now, Blue Avenue, to be extended at least all the way to Elm Springs Road will be considered in the next bond issue, and then we'll be looking at the extensions beyond that. The second change is to add an extension of Dixieland Road that comes through the city of Lowell over by J.B. Hunt Park. I mean, J.B. Hunt, I'm so used to saying J.B. Hunt Park, I don't even think about their corporate office, but it's their corporate office and their expansions, to bring it down from Apple Blossom to Dixieland, I mean, to Wagon Wheel Road. Part of the reason, you know, there's some potential for development in that area, as we all know, there's a major expansion going on at J.B. Hunt, there's a lot of traffic in that area to help alleviate some of those situations, and also to get it into the design of the 412 bypass, as is extended in the future, which we hope it will be, from 49 all the way to at least Highway 71 or to 265. We want to make sure that any extension of Dixieland is considered in that one. And then the third change that we're proposing is at the intersection of 49 and Elm Springs Road, looking at the possibility of some redesign of that interchange, and to the north of that, an extension of a local street from 45th Place to 40th Street. The more development that's occurring out there, the more congested that is getting and looking at putting those as an amendment to the Master Street Plan. We've cleaned up a little bit of things that needed to be done so that the Master Street Plan reflects how Johnson Road is on the south end of town, where it connects over from Johnson Road to Main Street and then on over to 49. I mean, that's already completed, we just made sure all that stuff was cleaned up. But those are the three proposals that are being made to the Master Street Plan at this time.
Okay, and this is a public hearing, so I'll open it up to the audience if you have any questions or comments on this. Yes, sir. If you'll just come up to the mic and state your name and address.
I'm Lynn Still. I live on Walden Street, and since J.B. Hunt has opened up their new parking lot, you can't hardly get off of Walden onto Apple Blossom either direction. So, what's the plans for Apple Blossom? And when this street goes in, if it does, there's going to be, the intersection's going to be traffic lights there to control the traffic, and at 4:30 to 6:00 in the afternoon, if there's a fall in Walden, the fire truck couldn't get to us.
And I think that's the reason, part of the reason why we're looking at making a change in that Master Street Plan. Right now, we are just at the conceptual stage of that extension. I can imagine there not being a traffic signal at that location. The improvements to Apple Blossom is somewhat complicated, but it takes Lowell and Springdale and Bethel Heights to all cooperate to get that together, and at this point, we really don't have anything put together, but we do realize there is a traffic situation there. And so, we're trying to address that with some future plans. How soon this is going to be forward, we're just going to have to wait and see how this happens in the next few minutes, but I know there's a lot of traffic up there.
How far west of Lowell would the street be?
Well...
I mean, on Walden Street, how far west of Walden?
Actually, I think we're looking right now at the backside of those properties, not necessarily on any of those houses that are there, but on the piece of property that's just to the west of those. At least, that's what we're considering right now.
So, you don't know how far it's going to be from our property lines?
We're not far enough along to know that yet, but we will get into that. You know, we're looking, trying to get some proposals for some conceptual designs, so we'll have a little bit more information. Keep in mind, what we're putting on the Master Street Plan is just the general idea there needs to make that connection. We're not saying it's going exactly in that location yet. We'll go through a design process and have public meetings and get public input when we get to that point.
So, you're going to do this before Lowell does their extension, or are you waiting for Lowell to get theirs done?
I think Lowell is further along because they've got federal funding to do design of theirs already, and to do environmental assessment, and to do utility relocation and acquisition. So, I think we're going to look at wherever they line up, we want to start from there and come south. I don't know exactly, I don't think they have any construction money, they may be asking for construction money in this next round of federal dollars. I don't know. We have to coordinate with all that, too.
Okay, so you don't have any timeline?
Not yet, but we've got to get started. If we don't get something on the plans pretty soon, the traffic congestion issue up there's not going to get any better.
Right. Apple Blossom's a mess already.
It is, there's no question, you're right.
Patsy, don't we, we need it on the Master Street Plan in order to try to get potential funding?
Right, and to move forward with it, it's got to be on the Master Street Plan, and we've never had it on the Master Street Plan because up until this point, Apple Blossom was kind of a little narrow street that didn't have a lot of traffic, and it's really changed in the last five or six months. It's a totally different environment up there than what it was. So, we're trying to be proactive, but we're a little bit behind. I'll just, I mean, that's what it is, you know, so, okay.
Any other questions or comments? Okay, it's to the commission.
The action we'll be looking for tonight is to move this forward to the City Council with a recommendation for approval, or however you want to recommend it. I'm assuming a recommendation of approval, so...
It'd be a motion.
Motion to approve, forward with recommendation for approval.
Okay.
Motion to move forward by Mr. Powell. Do I have a second?
Second.
Where was the second? Okay. Panado?
Yes.
Mueller?
Yes.
Parker?
Yes.
Parsley?
Yes.
Panado?
Yes.
Powell?
Yes.
Tyler?
Yes.
This will be moved forward to the council, and probably it's going to go to a council committee meeting, which will be not next week, but the following Monday after that, and then go to council on the 25th.
And that passed six zero, by the way. Okay. Next section, public hearing rezoning, R-17-24, Michael and Holly Paul, 503 Spring, from I-1 to an SF-2, presented by Michael Paul.
Hello. My wife and I bought this property from Welch's in '93, and the listing showed R-1. We never knew it was I-1 until we just got a buyer, and their lender won't loan them any money unless it's zoned residential. My wife and I lived there from '94 to '01, and it's been continually rented to families as a residence, no businesses there. Every other single-family property on the block is, as far as I know, residential, and this was kind of a surprise. So, hopefully, we can move this forward to the City Council and get the rezoning approved. The closing date's already been extended a month, and I'm glad these potential buyers want to hang with it because they're a young couple, they really like the area, and I do, too. I don't think we can come back yet, but we might. We really had a good time in Springdale, so that's my petition.
Staff comments?
The adopted comprehensive land use plan indicates medium-density residential use. The rezoning request is in keeping with the following goals and policies of the comprehensive land use plan is recommended for approval. Protect the positive aspects of neighborhood character throughout the city. Appropriate locations for single-family and multifamily residential development should be provided based on accessibility, site suitability, utility availability, neighborhood compatibility, and environmental factors.
Any questions or comments from the audience? It's to the commission.
Call for vote.
Call for vote by Mr. Powell.
Parker?
Yes.
Parsley?
Yes.
Panado?
Yes.
Powell?
Yes.
Tyler?
Yes.
Mueller?
Yes.
Rezoning passes six zero?
Staff will prepare...
That's wonderful.
Staff will prepare the ordinance, and it goes to council on July the 25th.
Okay.
Okay?
Thank you all very much.
Thank you. Next section, lot splits. We have a lot split 17-22, Ecclesia Incorporated, north side of Kerry Smith Road, east side of Highway 112, presented by Survey One Incorporated. Also in this is waiver 17-12 of subdivision requirements.
I'm Gene Busher with Survey One. The main reason, you might say, for this split is that Roger Traheel, who you see his parcel in the bottom-left side of Track 2, desires to have five more acres, and Ecclesia has agreed to sell him five acres, so including his one acre in this Track 2 makes it six acres total. And then there's two tracks left over, which 4.43 acres to the right of that, and the main big track, it's got 16.12 acres left at the top.
All comments from the utility companies and other city departments must be addressed prior to approval, and a waiver of subdivision requirements will need to be granted.
Any questions or comments from the audience? It's to the commission. So, we do the lot split first.
Well, we need to do the waiver of subdivision requirements because if they don't get that, then the lot split will have to go another route.
So, waiver would be a motion?
Waiver is a motion to recommend to council approval.
So, this is Ecclesia's land?
Uh-huh.
All this?
This is one of the tracks that they have. They have one of them, yes, they have one of them.
This is what they want to do with it?
Right, this is what they want to do with it. They're the ones that want to split off this portion to sell to the property owner, to the...
To the southwest.
To the south, so that it can be added to that property, and then they are splitting what they have left into two tracks. So, that's why it gets to be a waiver of subdivision regulations, because technically, we're creating three tracks for Ecclesia, but we're attaching one of them to the adjacent property. Okay?
Motion to approve. Waiver.
Motion by Mr. Powell. Do I have a second?
Second.
Second by Mr. Parker.
Who, who, second?
Peyton.
Parsley?
Yes.
Panado?
Yes.
Powell?
Yes.
Tyler?
Yes.
Mueller?
Yes.
Parker?
Yes.
Waiver passes six zero?
Call for the vote on the lot split.
Call for the vote by Mr. Powell.
It's a motion, subject to staff comments, too.
Motion, subject to approve.
Second.
Second by Mr. Panado.
Panado?
Yes.
Powell?
Yes.
Tyler?
Yes.
Mueller?
Yes.
Parker?
Yes.
Parsley?
Yes.
Passes six zero?
Staff will prepare the resolution, and the waiver will go to council on the 25th.
Okay.
Thank you.
Next section is replat 17-09, replat of lots 5 through 13, Ozark Business Park, south of Harbor Meadows subdivision, north of Schuyler, and east of Blue, presented by ESI.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. Jason Apple with ESI. We are proposing to replat, combine all these lots into one lot, from lots 5 through 13. And I'll answer any questions.
Staff comments?
We're going from all this to one lot?
Yes.
Back again, right? Okay, just making sure...
Trying to alleviate some fire code.
Okay. All comments from the utility companies and other city departments must be addressed prior to approval.
That's it? Okay. Any questions or comments from the audience? It's to the commission.
This is a motion and a second.
I'm sorry.
Oh, we got one comment? Okay.
My fault on that, sorry. If you'll just come up to the mic, state your name and address.
Hi, my name's Stacy Perry, and I live at 6398 Wells Circle. And if I'm correct, these are the lots that are directly behind my property? Would that be correct?
I'm sorry, where do you live?
6398 Wells Circle.
In...
Spring, in Harbor Meadows.
This is the other side of 56th Street?
Right.
Okay, yes.
So, 56th Street will go between my property and these lots, correct?
Right.
So, here's my question. One, you're asking to rezone them now, but they've already begun construction on these lots?
No, they're not rezoning it. What they're doing is, there were several lots there, and combining all those lots into one lot. The zoning is not changing, that's already been done.
So, they're combining them onto one lot, which means what for us?
Well, there's really not any change, as far as that's concerned. The construction, the approval has already been granted for what they're going to build there. They're getting rid of some lot lines, which creates some issues for them for fire code so that they can build the building a little bit different, but it's not changing. They're not changing the zoning, they're not changing the way they're oriented, they're not changing how they're looking, they're not changing the landscaping or anything like that. They're just combining the lots.
They're just combining, okay.
Right.
Okay. And who would be, because I have made several calls, Debbie Pounders has intercepted a couple of them.
I passed them along.
I know you have. But as far as the construction that's going on there with that one lot now, there's been a lot of issues. They're not following code as far as having a water truck out there to deteriorate the dust in the air, and I've spoken with Paxton, Mr. Paxton, one time. He's not returned my phone call since then. I've went over and I've spoken with the lot foreman, or whoever it is, I have his card, Mr. Ferris, spoken with him, and his reply to me was, "Send the bill to the city, and they'll find us." So, because I'm getting a tremendous amount of red clay in my pool on a daily basis because they're not using the water trucks, they're just relying on the rain. Lucky for them, we've had rain the past few days, but in the past few weeks, if we don't have rain for a couple of days, there's a tremendous amount of dust. So, do I send my bill to you, and will you guys pay it, or pass it on to them? Or is it going to be one of those things that takes three years, I'm never going to get my money? Because I'm spending two hours a day in labor myself that I would never have to spend. I've got noise on a daily basis. I can't enjoy my backyard because of the construction that's going on, which I can deal with that, but I can't deal with the labor on a daily basis and then having to spend $500 to change my sand out because it shouldn't have to be, but it's going to have to be because of all the dirt and dust.
Brad, you want to address that as a stormwater issue and as a construction, I mean...
It's the first one.
We can't hear you from back there.
It's the first I've heard of it.
Okay, okay. Brad is the city engineer, so he'll make note of that and get with Chris, and they will get with Misha and with whoever's overseeing that project to make sure, I'm sure Curtis is one of those doing the inspections on it, I would assume.
They told me the water truck was at the hospital job site, and I said, "Well, maybe you need two water trucks then." The only time I got attention is when I went over and started taking video.
I don't even, I can't tell you who is the construction contractor. I don't know.
I have a picture on my cellphone. CRI?
Is it Crawford?
Crawford, yes.
Okay, okay. We'll make note and...
Will somebody be in contact with me, then?
Yes, somebody will be in contact with you.
Thank you, I appreciate it.
Thank you. Any other questions or comments from the audience? Okay, it's to the commission. There's be a call for the vote, right?
Now, this is a motion to approve, subject to staff comments.
Motion to approve, subject to staff comments.
Motion by Mr. Powell?
Second.
Second by Mr. Tyler?
Powell?
Yes.
Tyler?
Yes.
Mueller?
Yes.
Parker?
Yes.
Parsley?
Yes.
Panado?
Yes.
Replat passes six zero?
If you want this to go to the next council meeting, you need to have the ordinance to the mayor's office by tomorrow at noon, and...
I have to correct that and say have it to our office?
Oh, okay, that's right.
It makes it easier?
Sorry.
In Word form?
Get it to Debbie in Word form by noon tomorrow, and then we'll take care of it. And I am assuming you will note to the developer and the contractor there's an issue.
We'll pass it along.
Okay.
Thank you.
The next item, final plat 17-02 for Tuscany subdivision, has been tabled per applicant. And the next one, replat 17-01, replat of lots 11 and 12 and parts of 4, 5, and 10, feed and seat addition, Lot 1, 410 East Huntsville Avenue, presented by Satterfield Land Surveyors.
I'm Jason Duff, and I'm a Satterfield land surveyor.
You wanted to explain to us what's going on here?
It's just my understanding, the west side of Lot 10, which is on the east side of that property, and about 30 foot of the southwest corner of Lot 5 is owned by Tyson Foods, and they are conveying that little strip over two feet and see, and they've agreed to do that through letters that I believe Debbie has.
They're in the file.
Okay.
Staff comments?
All comments from the utility companies and other city departments must be addressed prior to approval.
Any questions or comments from the audience? It's to the commission.
Motion to approve, subject to staff comment.
Motion by Mr. Powell?
Second.
Second by Mr. Panado.
Tyler?
Yes.
Mueller?
Yes.
Parker?
Yes.
Parsley?
Yes.
Panado?
Yes.
Powell?
Yes.
Replat passes six zero?
If you wanted to go to council next Tuesday, it needs to be to our office by noon tomorrow in Word form to Debbie so that we can get that processed.
Okay, all right. Thank you very much.
Thank you.
Next section, Board of Adjustments, B-17-40, Rafael Hernandez, 3118 Mueller, variance to increase height of wrought iron fence from front yard to three, from three feet to six feet, presented by Rafael Hernandez.
I'll see him here.
Next item, B-17-41, Cross Church Incorporated, 1709 Johnson Road, variance for deletion of paving requirements, presented by Aaron Brown.
Hello, Aaron Brown, Cross Church. I guess, basically, we're asking the council that we just keep our gravel parking lot for our buses that we've had for over 30 years now, so we are putting in a new maintenance, bus maintenance building in the back lot there.
Okay.
And that's what kicks us in, they're changing their large scale by adding a building to it. The area that's shaded on there will be the area that they would like to retain as gravel. And as you said, it's been gravel for...
Over 30 years.
Okay.
Any other comments? Okay. Any questions or comments from the audience? It's to the commission.
This is a call for the vote.
Call for the vote.
Call for the vote by Mr. Parker.
Mueller?
Yes.
Parker?
Yes.
Parsley?
Yes.
Panado?
Yes.
Powell?
Yes.
Tyler?
Yes.
Bingo.
Adjustment passes six zero? And I think that's it. We have one other item on here, and Lance, wanted to come up here. Okay. He's asking, should we be done with the meeting and then talk about this?
Oh, no. It doesn't make any difference.
Yeah, okay, go ahead.
I appreciate you giving me a second to share with the planning commission. Coming up in December, Springdale Chamber is going to be holding our fifth city future planning event. We've had several in Mount Magazine, and I think the last one was in Eureka Springs. We're going to be going to Chateau on the Lake for this one. This is going to be an opportunity for us to gather our elected officials, appointed officials, and a lot of the leadership in the business community together to see what's next for Springdale. In the previous times we've had, Patsy's been a part of, I believe, probably all of these, some of the things that we've seen come to fruition, whether it's things, moving things forward with downtown, helping the school with one of their millage elections, and I think the very first one, you guys actually, was kind of the genesis of the idea to go try to attract a minor league baseball team to Springdale. So, when you get this much brain power and this much people in the room together, a lot of great things happen, and things are moving at a lot quicker pace now, so we've kind of shortened the window to three years since the last one. We want to take the opportunity to bring all of the people like you, we want you to participate and be a part of this process to help us decide, you know, what are the big things that Springdale needs to be focusing on moving forward for the next three to five years. So, we invite you to be a part of this. We'll spend two nights at Chateau, that's included as being part of the commission, and all the meals together, and we'll have a facilitator come in and try to focus us into a specific area to make sure. And I was told that you'll definitely have to go by somebody in my office, that you don't have a choice, so... He said he can take care of that. So, we really want you to be a part of this programming so that when things happen, then you can look back and say, "I got to be a part of making this move forward for Springdale." And I'd be happy to, you know, visit with any of you if you have any questions for me anytime, so if you want to ask afterwards, I'd be happy to talk a bit more about it. So, thank you for the time.
I appreciate it, Lance. I had my chance to participate in it. And the last one that we had was in 2014, I think, that we had the last one. And for me, I was still fairly new, I think, on the planning commission at the time, and new, I think, on the Planning Commission at the time, and it was a great immersion into a lot of the different leaders within the community, both on the business side and on the public side as well. And this whole concept of live, learn, work, and play has still just kind of been instilled in my head as far as the different areas, and it's so neat as far as how Springdale's coming together as far as these different zones, whether it's the Ballpark District, the Downtown District, and so a lot of what we worked on back then, we're seeing that happen, and so this is just a continued acceleration. So, I echo what you say. I mean, it's definitely a good investment in the future of the city, but also the education that we get as well with the different leaders. So, thank you. Appreciate it.
All right. Patsy?
I want to remind everybody that there is a public meeting on the extension of Don Thompson Parkway to 112 tomorrow evening from 4:00 to 6:00 at Harvest Ballpark in the Sims Community Room. It's kind of an open meeting. Go in and visit with the staff and with the consultants and look at that extension, which I think is very important for us to move traffic as well as what we've been doing. Work session will be July the 18th at 5:30, and we want to start a little bit of discussion about complete street policies and look at the northwest quadrant and start putting some ideas together on that at that meeting on the 18th.
Very good.
I asked a question. Council came up last, on the back of this property, it came before the council, of course, then, question came up as far as how long an open grading permit is, and it said it was indefinite. Is that something we can look at?
Well, I think the engineering staff is looking at it. It really is a pretty technical question that I think we need to start there, and I think we'll come back, and I know that, Brad, we had, we had a discussion right after that meeting about, talking about some things that need to happen to the drainage criteria manual, and I think you'll see that coming forth in the next few months. Yeah, so we started that process, and then we'll get it to you just as soon as we can get that kind of stuff together, okay? And the council did uphold the Planning Commission's denial of that rezoning request, so, yeah.
Anything else? You guys have anything? All right. Meeting adjourned. Thank you.